I would like.
I'd like to call to order the July fifteenth Columbia Borough Council meeting. Have a roll call, please.
Councilperson Costin. Councilperson.
Here.
Councilperson Fisher. Councilperson Daisy. Councilperson Zink.
Here.
Councilperson Murphy.
Here.
Councilperson Regard.
Here.
Mayor Letts.
All right, did anyone wish to offer an invitation? Would you like to please rise from the. Councilperson Murphy, would you like to say some pledge?
I pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of executive sessions. On July eighth, after the workshop, council held an executive session to discuss personnel matters related to replacing staff. Are there any additions, collisions, or reorganization of the agenda meeting? I'm aware of that. I have a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by councilperson Stahl, second by councilperson Kaufman, or Murphy.
Heard her.
To approve the agenda as published, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So is a comment on agenda irons only, the person we have is ready to object.
Evening, folks. Had to apologize. I come down and left all my notes at home, so I hurried up made some new ones. First on my agenda was the meeting out at McGinnis's, but being Derek's not here, I'm gonna save that for next week or whenever the next meeting is. I would like to talk about the dump truck that was advertised that the borough had in surplus. That was advertised, and it was supposed to be sold last Wednesday, even though that was the wrong date. So I went to the auction with a dealer, and the truck didn't come through. So he went up to the auctioneer, and they couldn't give a reason why, but it was pulled. So I called back this week, and I understand it was advertised, it was at the auction up for Wednesday, but the advertisement said this Monday. So Jake took care of this issue right away. Had he not done that, there might have been some litigation within the borough. So he got it straightened out where it's going to be the end of the month. It had to be re-advertised because the date was wrong. It wasn't the borough's fault. It was whoever, the auction house or whoever did that. But Jake got on the ball right away, and had he not done that, it could have been possible litigation. So anyway, that's, now it'll be sold the end of the month. I just made some notes, quick notes here, what I think I had on my paper. I'd like to know where the borough manager status and the financial manager status on the hiring process. What's, where are we at with that?
The hiring process or conduct being introduced and.
How many have we gotten for both of them? Have we got a lot of people?
Stahl, I don't know exactly how many.
Who's doing the interviews? You have a committee? You have a committee?
For the.
For the finance.
For the finance manager staff is doing.
Okay.
So we have two more scheduled, Frank, currently scheduled. We have done quite a few already. We're making, trying to make sure we get the right persons for that job.
Okay.
We have another one here Thursday, nine AM, just kind of came across my desk on that one as well, so we're still actively.
Okay.
We also have Utenzomi position, and we're also interviewing for that one as well.
Okay. Yeah, I had a long talk with a person that lives up in Canoe Township about the hiring process, how things were going there at their managers' meetings or township meetings and that, but I'm sorry, I don't have my notes. I guess the last thing that I can remember, do we have signed contracts for the Graham property and the sewer plant? Do we have contracts that are to be sold, or is this still in limbo?
There is more, as, so specifically with regard to the wastewater treatment plant, there is an agreement of sale, both of them actually, there are agreements of sale with the Columbia Economic Development Company.
That's right.
Yes. So we're still obviously in the process of getting those sold to a third party through the CEDC as the borough code allows, but hopefully, hopefully very soon on, on at least the wastewater.
Okay, so when I walk away from here, I have the understanding that nobody has a signed contract to buy either place. Am I correct? Is that the way you interpreted?
You have to ask the CEDC. The CE, we have a signed contract with the CEDC that's in force and effect for both of those properties.
Does anybody make contact with them that usually know what's going on?
Yes, the borough council is aware of what they're doing.
So is there any information you can give the public?
At this point, I think there is a, I'll say, I think there's a, an end, an end user for the wastewater treatment plant. At this point for the KT Graham building, I don't believe there is at this point.
Yeah. This is my understanding, the people in the sewer plant had, who were going to be buying that, but I understood one of the holdups was they had, the highway committee has to move to Ridge Avenue once they get that place done. That's, that was my understanding, and now it's been so long since this come out that I'm just forgetting what's going on.
That's part of it, Frank, but that's not holding the sale up. The, what's holding the sale up is north of the suburb and trying to get the Eastman across the river crossing, the African crossing there.
But the intent from council is that we'll go to the people that's in there, the highway sheds and that, and boy, I wish you'd just walk away if you could, because we have everything set up down there at the highway. That building up in Ridge Avenue is gonna take mega dollars, and I just, we have everything set up. That would be nice up there if we had the money. There's a lot of things would be nice if we had the money. So, okay, thank you for your comments.
Is there anyone else that wanted to sign up that did not, or that wanted to speak that did not get a chance to sign up? Minutes for approval. I have a motion to approve the borough council meeting minutes for June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by councilperson Stahl, second by councilperson Murphy to approve the borough council meeting minutes for June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Questions or comments? See none, hear none, I have a motion by councilperson Stahl, second by councilperson Murphy to approve the borough council meeting minutes for June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Next, I have a motion to approve the borough council workshop minutes for July eighth, twenty-twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by councilperson Stahl, second by councilperson Murphy to approve the borough council workshop minutes for July eighth, twenty-twenty-five. Questions, comments? No? Next, Barb, I don't think I have much. See none, I have a motion by councilperson Stahl, second by councilperson Murphy to approve the borough council workshop minutes for July eighth, twenty-twenty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Presentation and acceptance of reports. In the absence of councilperson Kaufman, I will acknowledge receipt of the Columbia Market House report for June twenty-twenty-five. Are there any questions? No? And public works and property.
Yes. I would like to acknowledge the receipt of the public works and property report for June twenty-twenty-five. Any questions?
I do have a question. With all these storms, have we seen any major issues around town? Have we, have any of our roads washed out? Has there been a lot of trees that come down? How have we been bearing trees?
It's out of the bay, and we had a tree down on Portwood Street last night, that's the worst storm last night. We're on the road, it's running down, and it was snowing down last night. So as far as trees, it wasn't a lot. Last night's rain was just. Not a lot of rain, so we had quite a few areas that were flooded.
I saw the guys on Tenth Street shuffling piles of debris into the, into the truck. Well, that's good to know that we've not, and we didn't have flooding any place that we wouldn't expect, like.
Yeah, most.
It was all, it was all the streams.
The normal, yeah, the normal.
The smallest places.
I have a bike up there from Laurelwood, it's pretty much out. I know that drain completely helped get that much water coming down the street.
Oh, yeah, I got, I got a video from my dad.
It actually pushed the, the manhole cover off of it. Small drain. That's a lot of damage.
I was, I've been wondering how we have been bearing, I didn't see any reports of streams washed out or anything like that, so I think our infrastructure held up pretty well.
Yeah, I think I did see, kind of a little bit of some concerns maybe with that parking street, small drain, in the future. We're, we're a lot of the, we're. That's always been a problem.
Yeah. Well, isn't, isn't part of that happening when they do the new Saint John Burrow buildings?
When they do that, that's gonna take, that's gonna help. That's what happens, all that comes together with the action.
Yeah. Good. Excellent, thank you. I was wondering if people asked.
That do, it was pinned up, the nearby group thing, the Strickler Run, that's probably the worst.
Did the road itself wash out?
No, it's, it's got some on the wall, even on the side of it, so we need to get that prepared. What I heard is about the same.
I noticed today when I was out at the medicine shop, there is undermining under that sidewalk on that side from Strickler Run, and that parking lot always has issues, but there's bad washout there. Is that us that does it, or is that in the?
Well, some of that, and I only just seen this, like, said, we could expose some of the alarms.
Yes.
Or traffic people, but. And we'll probably just. Probably we'll go out tomorrow.
It's, it's pretty bad. Their, their one, that one side is really, is really bad. Good. Thank you. Good job, this has been kind of unprecedented rain the last month or so. Well, yeah, it's been nonstop, but. Anything else on public works and property? Mayor isn't here, but Chief?
Yes, thank you. The police department would like to invite the community and council to the National Night Out event on Tuesday, August the fifth, starting at six PM, and it ends at eight PM. So this is a wonderful community event. There's free food, free ice cream, usually typically well attended. We have most of the stands. Orders are, are going to return this year. So once again, inviting the public out. You have an opportunity to interact with the police officers, the other borough employees, so it's a fun evening. I'd also like to announce that the police department recently promoted two officers. Sergeant Holly Arndt was promoted to lieutenant, and Corporal Brent Kaiser was promoted to sergeant. So this took place last week. Both are excellent officers, and we're very excited about their continued growth, and look forward to what they have to offer us in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations to Kaiser and Arndt, yes, wonderful.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Action items. First, could I have a motion to authorize the bill payments?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by councilperson Stahl, second by councilperson Murphy to approve the bill payments. Are there any questions or comments on this? I know it looks like a lot, and that was because with, it's kind of a combination of things. The last meeting, we only had about half of, half of the amount of checks because Laurie was out, so she did the checks before she was on vacation, and then plus the fact that we're a week later than we should be, have a little extra month to check, so that's why it looks like there's so many. Are there any questions or comments on the bills? A motion by councilperson Stahl, second by councilperson Murphy to authorize the bill payments, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, we are asked to authorize staff to advertise a position of public maintenance quarter two. I'll have a motion.
So moved.
A motion by councilperson Stahl, second by councilperson Regard to authorize staff to advertise a position of public maintenance quarter two. This is due to the retirement notice we received, and I'm sorry, go ahead, Barb.
Yes, due to the retirement notice of Chuck Wallach, and although I never met him, I'd just like to publicly thank him for his years of employment with the borough and hope he has a happy retirement. Jake, did you want to say anything? You worked with him.
Yeah, Chuck was one of you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Are there any questions, comments? We realized his last day would be August twenty-ninth, but the fact that it has historically been taking us a little bit longer to get people who'd rather advertise now and start that interview process to get someone in rather than. A motion by councilperson Stahl, second by councilperson Regard to authorize staff to advertise a position of public maintenance quarter two, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, next. We have finally gotten the, everything we need for the zoning amendments for the Guinness Project for the Lake Business District. So do I have a motion to authorize staff to advertise a hearing for zoning ordinance nine fifty-seven?
Second.
A motion by councilperson Regard, second by councilperson Stahl to authorize staff to advertise a hearing for the zoning ordinance. I put the ordinance in there that we'll be advertising, and I also included the document we received from the Lancaster County Planning Department, did not go to the full County Planning Commission, it was a decision by staff, which was good because then I didn't have to recuse myself. The only, their only comments you can see are related to. Recommended that the proposed amendment includes maximum allowable bu, building area for data centers for required conditional use or special exceptions due to their specific impacts on power and water infrastructure.
And did we make an allowance for that or not?
We did not specify any maximum, anything in our.
And we're not going to?
Unless someone has a suggestion, I, I don't even know what.
Yeah, that's what I think. Once one that time comes.
Yeah, you could all, you, and certainly if three months down the road, you see this as being a real possibility there, you can enact something if you so choose, so.
And I think we're, we're on the cutting edge of things because also this week I received an invite from the Lancaster County Planning Department for, to participate in an exercise related to data centers and how the burrow municipalities would, you know, what they can do in their ordinance and stuff, so I was asked to postpone that.
Pretty first, huh? Omen, huh?
Yeah.
Yep, nice.
All right. Are there any questions, comments, concerns on this one? I have a motion by councilperson Regard, second by councilperson Stahl to authorize staff to advertise a hearing for zoning ordinance nine fifty-seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next. We need to adopt an ordinance related to the bond for the bios loan. This is a formality we'd already authorized staff to close on, on the bios loan, the bios funding. The fund, yeah, we've al, we've already, and in getting ready for that closing, it was discovered we actually needed to pass an ordinance. So I know there were questions, go ahead, Evan. It was in the paper, and I know there were questions about, why was it in the paper? Because it had to be done.
Exactly, yeah, so this is part, anytime the borough increases its indebtedness, you have to do what's called a local government unit debt act debt proceeding that basically tells the, the state government that you are, you have enough revenues to be able to cover the debt service and that you're not getting too debt heavy. That is not a problem here. You guys, the only indebtedness you have as far as a long-term debt is the, is the rest of the bond that you have to pay off, which you owe about seven million dollars on still, and that's, we refinanced that in twenty-twenty-one. The main thing that you will see here that is probably a little different than what you would have anticipated is the repayment schedule that's in exhibit A. In talking with the attorney from the Commonwealth Financing Authority that we've been working with, we couldn't just put in there that you would pay off the, the loan, right? Your plan, at least at this point, the main plan that I've heard from council, is that you plan to get done with phase one, use whatever funding, and then use those proceeds to basically sell the property and pay off this, the loan portion of this. That will not work for this. They, that, they would not allow us to put that in there, basically, that there is no repayment schedule, we're gonna make one payment and then be done with it. So what I did is, I had to make an assumption, so I assumed that, that you would sell a million dollars worth of property, pay that part back of the loan, and then pay the rest back over the twenty-year, the nineteen-year lifespan of the loan, essentially. So that's, that's what this does. Again, I don't anticipate that we're ever going to get here in any way, shape, or form, but that's what, that's what we had to do here, so if you have any questions about, that's really why that is in there. I couldn't just say, we're not gonna, we're gonna pay off the, the two-point-two million dollars and be done with, that was not an option. So just wanted to, just wanted to let you know that, because I know that's probably a little bit jarring to see that in there.
Well, great, and the other thing you have to keep in mind is with having the amortization schedule in there, the assumption is that we are taking the entire five million right off of that, and that is not the case.
Yes, yeah.
So.
Again, another, another assumption that we had to make in order for this.
Right, in order to do it. Yes, Sharon?
Can I ask a question while she's getting ready? Could you explain to me why in the ordinance it says five million twenty-eight thousand, and then in the explanation or whatever you want to call it, it says a sum of ten million five hundred and twenty thousand?
So the, the five million twenty-eight thousand thirty dollars is the loan portion of your bios funding, right? So that represents about, that represents sixty percent of the total bios funding that you're getting. That ten million five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars is the estimate for the entire project that you got from Rick Brenneman the last time he did a construction estimate.
So can you, can you give me a figure of with all of the loans, grants, and everything like that, how much exactly do you expect the borough to foot up this bill?
I would say likely none in the end. I mean, you, so the total bios funding is eight-point-eight million, I believe, somewhere in that neighborhood. You've already gotten a billion dollars from the state for this project. So that puts you very close to that top ten million five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar mark, but again, I don't think, given what council has signaled here, I wouldn't imagine that you're ever gonna get close to that, and that the bios funding will cover all of that, and then when you sell the property, you should be able to sell it for at least as much as you have in it, if not significantly more.
And how, how long do you expect, do we expect this loan to carry, keep carrying on?
You, it is a reimbursement loan, so if you were to get done with phase one here in November, let's say, you don't pay any interest on this money until either you start selling property or it's five years after the loan has been closed on. So if, if you were to sell this, let's say you sell this property in March of twenty-twenty-six, you sell it all as one piece, that would be, that will be the end of this. So you wouldn't pay, the three percent interest rate again kicks in after you've either, it's either five years after closing or you start selling property, whichever comes first.
And is interest still high, or do you, do you find that it has waned a little bit over the years? Is interest still high?
Interest is still much higher, certainly much higher than the three percent that you are, you're, you would be have to pay if you, if you did have to pay any interest on this, yeah.
Okay, and, and you said that we don't start paying interest until after so many years, but the first payment, which is due in January, it has ten thousand seventy dollars interest.
Yes.
That's what he was saying, he had to put that in there.
To make it.
Even though it's not accurate.
It, it starts, interest starts at the first of either the sale of any portion of the property or five years after closing, whichever comes first. So my assumption was that you would get done with phase one this year, sell a million dollars worth of property, which would kickstart that interest, and then you would pay that back over time. So that's, that's where that is, that's where that's coming.
And God forbid, if it turns out to be a white elephant, is there a backup plan?
I can tell you that based upon the appraisals that have been done. I can tell you that based upon the appraisals that have been done, even if you didn't do anything else at that property, you would come out ahead. I can tell you that from the appraisals that have been done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. May I go now?
Yep.
Sorry to push her.
That's okay.
Council people get first dibs.
Okay. So Evan, you mentioned when you were just talking, you said about the indebtedness is not a problem, but I beg to differ with that statement because we just had a two mil increase.
I under, I, I am saying based upon the calculations that D C D says.
Okay.
Right? So it's based upon your revenues and your, your indebtedness. I believe, I don't have it in front of me, but the, the borough can borrow up to two hundred and twenty five percent of the average revenue that you've had over the last three years. So that puts you in the neighborhood of eighteen, eighteen million yourself. Yeah. Well, actually, yeah, you're probably right. So yeah, probably twenty one million, twenty, twenty one million. Yeah.
And what would that do to us as taxpayers if that happened? I'm just.
It would, it would probably not be good.
Yes.
I don't, we're not going to be.
Thinking about that.
Okay. I just wanted to elaborate on that statement.
The, the statement that I made was just based upon what D C D will allow you to do. I'm not saying that's a good idea.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, right.
So it's my understanding this five million will be for the extent of whatever happens out there. Am I correct? For the life of that, whatever we do to get that going.
Yes, right. Plus about three point, three point six million or seven million in grant money as well.
Okay. In listening to you, maybe you will apply for that finance manager's job.
No, thank you.
And my question is for anybody sitting at the table. If we was to spend that five million, where do we stand as far as the borough's debt? What are we looking at as of right now without doing anything else?
As far as I know, the only long-term debt that you have in this borough is what remains of the general obligation bond that was refinanced in 2021. Which is, it's, I believe right now you owe seven million and forty thousand dollars on that from what, what we have been told.
What, what was the bond for? I've been wanting to ask you that.
So that was, the bond that we refinanced in 2021 was the bond that the borough took out in 2016 to do the improvements to the sewer plant, which was then subsequently sold. And then that bond was used for other things after that.
It's used for the wall, for the four blocks of wall, which is reconstruction.
Oh.
It was used for the market house.
Market house. You said the market house was pretty much.
Here's some others.
I thought when we sold the conveyance system, we had money left over.
I, I can't answer. I don't know. I was not here then, so I don't know what all was.
You're right.
But that, that was, that's my understanding. That, that original bond is still what was taken out. It's a refinance now, but that original bond was what was taken out to do the improvements to the sewer.
Okay. So we're looking at three, three fundings that come into the borough, which would be Ridge Avenue. When they subdivide that, they're going to sell off the other part. We're looking at Ram Incorporated, whatever it is down there. We're looking at the sewer plant. Is there any more other than that that we're looking at? Maybe revenue?
I mean, the, the McGinnis, once you get it done, hopefully that will bring in some revenue. But yeah, I think you're, I think you hit, hit those three probably.
I just wondered if there's anything that I was missing.
The other one is the other side of the Borough Farm up there along Blue Lane. We sold that off last year. Or the, yeah, last year. So that was nine hundred and seventy thousand about. What's that? That's it. Yep. That's in the capital fund.
Plus the lot, bought the lot. So you got that. But I was wondering if there's any additional coming that we could, got that to look forward to.
I think the borough has gotten rid of quite a bit of real estate over the last few years. So I don't know if there's a ton of big pieces that are, that are left.
Okay, thank you.
So just to clarify, what, the bid for the initial remediation was two point five, right?
Two point one two.
Two point one.
Two, yeah.
Nine five.
Yeah.
Two point.
Two point two.
Two point two. Sorry, I'm just going to do some quick math because it's sixty percent. So the, the loan portion, which is this five million, the loan portion that's available is sixty percent of anything we do. So to put it in perspective, of that two point two that we're set to spend of this bios funding, one point three is the amount that's going to be coming out of this loan that needs to be repaid whenever we sell the property. So it would only be one point three million out of this designated five million, twenty eight thousand.
However, then you're right. It'll be one point, it'll be like one point four for this part of the project. However, there is about three hundred and fifty thousand that we have spent above and beyond that initial million. And since it was incurred after we were approved for bios, as soon as we close on this, we're going to submit the paperwork to get that money too. So that three, so let's just say four, one point four one and four hundred is one point eight is good, is what's going to be there. That's it. I mean, that's.
Well, sixty percent of that, sixty percent of that three hundred and fifty thousand.
So, you know.
One, one point five, give or take. Yeah.
So yes.
There are quite a few things that we can include with that, engineering fees. We're going to be tearing down seven hundred Franklin Street. All that can be rolled in. So more of the stuff that we can actually grow in, we're going to get a good percent each of, well, forty percent of all that, I mean, that.
So I mean, it, it, it looks a lot, but when you think about it in, in those terms, you know, and think about it, we've paid one point four nine five. So one point five plus the two point two. But then you keep, you have to take like the sixty percent of those. I mean, as long as we sell it for, you know, three and a half, we're good.
And we'll, knock on wood, but that should not be a problem based upon what we've.
We, we are in a very good position.
You have a question?
Yes. Can you go to the microphone and state your name for the record, please?
My name is Kyle Ricker. Is that picking up? Okay, thank you. Yeah, just, I wanted to get a couple of clarifying questions. I think they're mostly kind of covered already, but. So just to clarify, is the intention for this five million dollar loan with the McGinnis property or for the McGinnis property to essentially get it ready for sale? Not, not to continue development after that, right? And I think this was also covered as well, but the reason is that for land development, the five million dollar cost, that is not necessarily what is being kind of targeted for use for this.
Correct.
Okay. And is, I guess the only other thing is, is there any, any quotes or kind of thoughts on figures for how this might fit into that five million? Even if we're not like necessarily like banking on using all five million, like or, or, I guess how, how confident are we as we, we can like stay under that bar?
Very confident we can stay under that bar because the intention is not to go further than remediation, which was bid at two point two. But the, the total amount here, the ten million, five twenty one, two sixty five was approved based on the estimates that we received at the time. So I mean, that's a pretty, I mean, who knows? I, I, I thought it would have been a lot more now. But it doesn't look like that the costs have gone up that much.
Yeah. When we got that cost estimate from Rick Brenneman was kind of at the height of the surge in material prices. And so it, it, it certainly hasn't gone down since then, but it hasn't continued to rise at the level that it was.
Right. I mean, we, we thought where we thought remediation was going to come in was actually, where it came in was actually lower than what we had thought it would be. So I mean, we're pretty confident in those numbers.
Yeah. I think that was just the main thing is just clarifying intent.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this ordinance? Do I have a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by councilperson stall. Second by councilperson Fisher to adopt ordinance nine sixty two related to the bond for the bios loan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? And the mayor will be back on Monday.
Perfect, okay.
So I will make sure it gets in here Monday to sign that.
Yep, absolutely.
Next, we have two items for HARB. The first, we have COA for one thirty nine North Third Street. This was recommended for approval, I'm getting down. With no conditions. Any questions? Updating an existing pop sign to channel letters on raceway with halo lighting.
So is it changing the name from seven ten Smoke Shop to seven ten Convenience? That's, is that what I'm getting?
That's what it looks like, yes. Is anyone here for this property? Yeah, that's what it appears, which is a positive thing, I think.
And Paul, I'm, I'm assuming that all the lighting and everything passes all the ordinances. Okay.
Said I like Subway better.
I know. I miss Subway.
I was just excited to see them on the the, the restaurant inspection, not, not listed as selling unapproved stuff. Does anyone have a problem voting on this one? Does anyone like to make a motion to approve the COA for one thirty nine North Third Street?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by councilperson stall, second by councilperson Fisher. Approve the COA for one thirty nine North Third Street.
Aye.
Why does it say in our, in our paper, one thirty nine, but on our information it says one forty nine? So which one is it? It just says here, the historical, the review board address, one forty nine North Third.
Oh, the application says one forty nine.
In the executive brief.
And the COA, okay. Oh, that's my bad. Good catch, Mrs. Fisher. All right.
Hold the applause there.
Or I have a motion by councilperson stall, a second by councilperson Fisher to approve the COA for one forty nine North Third Street. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? And next we have a COA for four forty Chestnut Street. And this was also recommended for approval with no conditions. The owner is seeking approval to remove the retaining wall in the front yard and repair the rod at front porch. Questions? Is there anyone here for this application? Yes. Are there any questions for him?
The only question I would have is you're, you're putting black mulch down or any, or whatever a couple of mulch, but are you going to be putting anything there to try to, like I, I've used bricks or metal edging to try to keep it retained and keep it in place? Because, you know, it kind of rains we had last, yesterday and, and others will just wash right down the street and. That's the biggest question I had for it.
Yes, Sharon. And it looks like this work is already started.
Actually, that's what I was going to say. It was removed before it went to HARB, I think, the retaining wall. And I just, I guess it's more a question for HARB, but why are we allowing retaining walls that have natural stone to be removed and not renovate or, you know, maintain somehow to keep that historic value in the district? I know of another one that natural stone was removed and replaced with the kind of formed stone you can buy at Lowe's. I mean, we're eroding away at the district. It's already done. I mean, it's already gone, but I just think, I'm not sure why HARB would agree to that with no conditions. It just seems, why do we have a HARB anymore? I mean, it just doesn't seem right to me. And I just wondered, is the porch going to be enclosed? I just, the porch has some very beautiful wood up underneath. It kind of has almost a Mount Bretina feel under the porch roof there. It's a beautiful place. Just a shame we had to lose the wall. Thank you.
I mean, I can understand from the pictures, you know, why you're doing, want to, want to remove some of the shrubbery, shall we say, to give a little better view from your, of your house from the street. But, you know, I was, you know, again, I didn't bring it up because I figured, I figured it was disgusting to HARB. Excuse me, HARB, why, why this was, obviously it was already done. But yeah, it, it's a beautiful wall. Would have been, would have been nice to see it kept.
So that's problematic, right?
Yeah.
Every time this happens.
It's like, well, it's already done.
Move on approved next month or next year, next six months. Here's another wall. Here's another facade. Some other, how, how do you, how do, how do we stop loss of these architectural, historical architectural features in the historic district? It's going to continue happening. How do you stop?
Even if there's a fine, it doesn't put it back. You know what I mean?
Right.
Unless you make them put it back.
I know.
Reconstruct it.
Yes, reconstruct it.
Is that an option now?
It is.
Can we boot it back to HARB with that?
They've already recommended an approval without.
Without, without.
And so can we boot it back to HARB instead? We would, kind of like Lancaster does for us. We, we see all this, but we recommend that you reconsider. I don't know if that's legal.
It is, but I mean, we're the deciding body. All we're doing is, is recommending. We're the deciding body. So Mary.
I have to agree on that wall. What was the west curved piece was deteriorated and allowed to crumble. The main portion of that wall was still in fairly good shape. I, I walked by that property almost every day. And I'd look at that porch and keep thinking, what was crumbling? And this has to be a very old picture because that piece to the right, towards where Dr. Perry's office was, that piece had started to crumble. There were pieces out of that. The rest of that wall was in fairly good shape. The piece to the far left was in. The piece to the far left was in very good shape. I could not believe, with going to the river, I don't walk by there every day. So maybe I walk by there on a Thursday. I came back by there on a Tuesday. That was all gone. There was no permit posted anywhere for any work to be done. The work on the porch had started to be done. And I actually sent emails in here and questioned where, where's the permits for this stuff? I, I am very disappointed with how this is going. Thank you.
I don't, I don't think it's, I mean, it's setting another precedent for other people to just go willy-nilly. Go, uh, what's this going on?
Was anyone here at the Harb this meeting?
I mean, Kate, you're the dump and pull out all the original stone and rebuild it. What do you do with the options? Kate, you just say, I face the same situation six months from now. Every six months, it's another.
Right, I mean, this is no different than the, than the, uh, wooden stairs in the, uh, four hundred block or the three hundred block of woman.
One and one and one day. Just that we don't see.
Exactly.
Question I have.
Sorry.
I might be out of line, but I'm going to ask anyway. Is this a Reynolds or what will this bottom line be once everything is fixed? Does anybody know?
Is this a Reynolds, sir? The owner.
What was your question?
I asked, the owner's here, uh, the gentleman's here, so I asked him if it was.
It's supposed to be a single family home, but yeah, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Well, yeah, the question I have too is, the first part was about this, the wall, but as far as the, uh, going back to kind of what Sharon alluded to, too. The, the woodwork underneath is very ornate and, and it, you can't really tell. Are you just replacing just the posts or are you intending to keep the ornate woodwork at the top part? And try to marry the two together so they look like they were.
It's spotted.
So you're going to cut, you're going to cut the curves off of the part of the wood?
That, that porch is not historically correct. Somebody added that one later.
You're talking the rounded porch? The rounded corner, you're saying?
You're just going to make it straight?
I mean, there's other homes in Columbia with a rounded cornered porch, for sure.
Yeah, but that was added one way. I mean, that's not changing that.
How? How do we, how do we know that? How do you know that?
Because if you look at the other person, the next door neighbor's house, see that bay window up top? That comes the whole way down from the house.
I know.
On the right, right side of the picture, I mean.
So somebody added that, you know, changed that. That front, that big front window would be front, basically, you know, it started to crack that down.
It could have been put on that way from the beginning, though, when it was built. Just customized.
It's, it was really messed up.
It's certainly rotten.
While the arch is built.
Well, the Harb paperwork doesn't say anything about changing the shape or anything of, of the porch. So the expectation would be that everything that's there is put back the way that it is there. And, but that only shows.
The column.
The columns. And it does show that the dentil molding at the top.
Looks like he's having pillars there with.
But it doesn't, right, but it doesn't show the wrap around. It only shows that one section. So in my mind, that should be retained.
Well, it looks like that would happen, so. Those posts are only one line.
So in that picture, the, the posts that are sitting on top of the brick wall that, that the roof above is sitting on. What are those, the width of those? They're not, they're not solid beams?
No.
Oh, that's not going to hold up either. If, if, if those are just boards, it's not going to hold up either. Over time, it's going to.
He's talking about, he, he was talking about the, the six by six, six by six posts.
That's pretty bad.
Are, are the, are the posts going to be pressure treated?
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't say it in. It says PT, I just want to make sure that's what it meant.
I mean, we're seeing the columns right now built by one box, so boxes.
Yeah.
Boxes. That's not my porch, just.
Same here.
I don't know the solutions to, uh, rectify that kind of stuff, rotten wood, I don't know the process. We're here to approve whether or not it fits within, uh, the changes fit within the historical, uh, requirements according to the historical architectural review, right? The guidelines. And I don't know what to say about that. You could use six by sixes or.
No, I mean, that's not the, that isn't the point.
I know, that's not the point.
For us, I mean, we certainly want it to be built well, last long for the homeowner. I thi, I think the application is incomplete because the, none of that was specified in terms of removing that curve or proving why it was not original, um, to that house.
I don't know, is it, are we assuming it's not original? He assumes it's not original. Are we assuming it is original?
Well, right.
Historical district down here, they have pictures of just about every house in the historical district down there. We could probably find a reference to that house real early on.
But isn't that the histor, that's what Harb does, right?
Yeah. I mean, I'm really upset about that wall being robbed.
I, I am.
So, I mean, I wish we had some, something to lean on to either implement or require some kind of remediation into its original form. Can't now, right? But what we can do in the future is, uh,
No, we can.
We can, in kind.
Wall be put back up.
That's, that's what Harb is for. Anything that's in, too far gone, so to speak, but is historically important, is to be restored in kind. Not, it's not that every stone has to match what, what it looked like in the picture, but.
I'm saying the original is now gone. We won't be able to get the original.
Well, the, there's a picture of it.
It's not the original step, you know what I mean? There's going to be some facsimile.
Right.
Like Sharon said earlier.
It could be. There, no, I mean, there are stone masons who build stone walls with real stone. That's what the Harb, the whole point of Harb and why there have been, you know, I, this was before I got on, but there were issues between Harb and council over materials and what was approved. And in-kind replacement. Anything that's visible from the street is, needs to be, according to the historical architectural board, needs to be in kind. Or at least appear to be according, yeah, it needs to be approved as in-kind materials.
Yes, Sharon.
I think a lot of this has to fall back on Harb because I don't think it should have came this far to you. And I know that you said one time that Harb didn't want to be the bad guys. And they were kind of just rubber stamping everything so they didn't have to look bad. But I think something has to go back to them. Not this, I don't mean, but I mean, somebody has to talk to them. Because if we're going to continue to have a historic district, you shouldn't wind up in a situation like this where, you know, I just think something's wrong there. And I've been a strong advocate of enforcement with regard to things like this. And it just seems like, like Todd said, it just keeps happening, so I don't know where it's going to end. Thank you.
Where's the documentation that talks about which Secretary of Interior standards that this falls in? Like, what is our reference? I don't see that.
Usually they send something to us, you know, a little more detailed than, than this particular certificate of appropriateness is.
Right.
Because like I said, it didn't get, I, we're less, we're left to guess that they discussed it, but, you know, I, I, I get he's saying that maybe that the curvature on that wood wasn't original to the house way back when, but it, it is now, so, you know, did they discuss, you know, you know, we're left to guess. Did they mean to put the curve back or did they just mean replace it with street boards? Oh, a drawing says what a drawing says, but.
Could I just ask one more question? Did codes cite them? I, I mean, what triggered the whole process or did the, did the owner just feel it was time to replace it? Or were they cited? Because if they were cited by codes, wouldn't that have triggered then a Harb review because it was in the district?
One of the officers took care of two work being done.
Okay, but they didn't see it before that? They didn't see that it was already peeling paint or rotted wood or, I mean, they weren't, they didn't see it till it was already, okay. I guess that's even another problem. Thank you.
So what are we thinking?
Well, I mean, personally, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Sharon, I'm just speaking. So, a noted violation was issued. That's the start of it. And then they have proceeded, generally proceeded with sharp work. That's the, he goes, no, no application.
Okay, but I, I'm required to report.
Oh, so, yeah.
Correct, because I should, I mean, it is a violation, right? Because that didn't happen though, like looking on this deterioration, we want to go and crack out the right lines. And that we do the first time they're excited. That's more.
I, I think that based upon the photos of what it looked like before, there needs to be an application put in for replacing it with, with all the intentions of the replacement laid out. And that needs to go before Harb and be with historical evidence, prove that if there's historical evidence, photos that the porch is square, that's fine. But obviously, this porch has been on this house for years, decades. I don't see any proof that it was different to the contrary. The arch.
The four round porch is going to stay.
The curv, the curved edge of the, the curge, the curved eve, rather. Mm-hmm, okay. But anyways, the.
But between columns, the curve's going away.
Yeah, between columns, I think where you're referencing the curves, that where you're referencing.
Okay.
Well. He's going to eliminate those curves.
It's going to be squared off.
Make it squared.
Yeah, if you look at that paper drawing, that's what he's doing.
Like the drawing, that's it.
Mm-hmm.
It's pretty clear.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Well, that's, to me, that's Harb's decision. All of that needs to be in the application to recommend whether.
Showing that it's flat. And so that's what Harb approved.
So they did approve that? Okay.
Building materials are referenced one by mine.
And then going down one more. I think it's one more. Yeah, stop there. See, it's that curvature that's going.
Yeah, see how it is in the center right there?
I misunderstood, I thought you were squaring the corner of the porch.
As far as the wall's concerned, I would have loved to have kept the wall. But I got quotes for astronomical prices. My wife was just diagnosed with PSP, which is supernuclear palsy. I had to retire to take care of her. So, I mean, money's an option.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, I think that there is, the borough does have funding available for this kind of thing. Am I wrong?
No, the borough didn't have any funding, no.
I thought there was something. When I did the, the, uh, the, uh, confidence plan, I thought that was all stated in there. Leo would know.
There's no funding.
But in either case, this is new business, we don't have to vote on this tonight. And I would, I would recommend, in cases like this, I think we should require someone from Harb to be here to answer all of these questions. I would think we boot it back to Harb.
The homeowner is here, he can answer any of our questions.
But I mean, Harb, why did they vote the way they did? What were the specifications? Without them here to tell us, we don't know.
I'm sort of, I'm wondering what the, the, um, Lancaster Historical, what their assessment was. The consultant, that's what I'm looking for. Thank you, Mary.
And they're available to Harb. Harb should be accessing.
They do use them for everyone.
I thought everything was going down there to them to get that, to get that review to say.
Yeah.
We knew that. So we're making decisions on the historical district without the benefit of a consultant and expert.
Wait, so the consultant is not being consulted?
No, that's what she just said, that the expert is not being consulted.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I think it, I think it needs to be reviewed. Because personally, and I, I apologize, sir, I know, I understand and feel for you in a financial predicament in terms of the law. And this is aside from, this board here needs to decide based upon the preservation of the historic district according to our ordinances and, and our commission as a borough to preserve the historical architecture of the borough. And so, you know, when, when we see something like that taken down, that's without any approval beforehand, you know, that's a problem.
Yeah, I wonder what, I wonder what Harb would have said if they wanted to fix this.
porch. I could see some give and take on that porch, right? I also want to remove this wall. I think Harb would have said yes. Circle of mulching. Want to remove this wall also.
Well, it's on the, it's on the application, so they approved it.
The wall was removed prior to ever coming before Harb, right? So if it's an, oh wow, it's gone now, can't, might as well prove it as it is. That's what's causing the problem.
Well, and it kind of struck me because I have seen them kick back things when there's been a hand drawn schematic and not, you know, an official architectural drawing yet. This one is just that and it didn't get kicked back, so.
That's too close.
I think they're allowed to submit. Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to hear which standards and, and everything.
And what's the recommendation to do after the fact kind of incidents like this, right? You can never make that wall originally. It's gone forever. The history of that wall, everything they've deceived over the centuries is gone. That is gone. Can never, that can never be revised. And that's sad.
But it's.
Very sad. But it keeps happening. So I want to know from a consultant, what can we do after the fact? Was the right thing to do after the fact? And what do we do to keep it from happening in the future? And, you know, big hefty fines or gets around, people stop doing things, right? We just, we just never really address it in a meaningful way. Other than just pass it on, say, too bad, so sad again. It happened again, we got to fix this someday. I would like to know from the consultant, he thinks it's a good way to mitigate these kind of problems.
Well, I don't know that the Lancaster Historic or the Regional Society is going to delegate that.
What have, what have other people done? Other borough districts, I don't know. I just know it's sad, frustrating.
So I'm hearing we're not going to vote on this tonight. Is that correct? And we would like to get the consultant's opinion of the project.
I'd recommend doing some research on that property in the Historical Society, the Preservation Society. I know there's.
Does, yes. They might even have that documented already. They are going to survey right now, up and down. Right, so they may have it documented.
Should we recommend that the drawing be?
I don't have a problem with the drawing.
I don't think.
Will they have, will the, will the board or will the consultant have a problem with that?
I think, I think if you explain it, it's going to be straight across.
Mm-hmm.
And if, if the, if the consultant comes back and says, no, it should be the angle of the radiuses for the spoken reservations, then that's the recommendation. That's the same as the wall. They could come back and say the wall really doesn't have any significance.
They absolutely could. Exactly, exactly. But that's, that's what we have to consult for. That's why we have it.
Can I just say one thing kind of in general? I think to follow your ordinance and what's the fire, you know, Harb district, those need to be happening. I know they're expensive and a lot saying they're not, but those reviews, that needs to happen.
We, we have heard that. I think every one of us thought it was happening.
Yeah.
I just want to be clear that that, that.
Yeah. I, we all thought that they were happening when everyone warned it goes to Harb.
I'm saying that after the fact is really why Mr. is after.
Well, no, you can do, you can do something after the fact. You can force them to put it back to.
No, it's not going to be the exact same standard they can, but.
But you can't, you can't control that. You can't, you can't, you cannot control somebody on a Saturday afternoon deciding to take something out and change something. But what you can do on Monday is you can force them to put it back to the way it was as best as you can.
That kind of decision will.
Yeah, we had that, we had that before. Right.
We did it with the steps.
No, we didn't. No, I'm the only one that did it.
But again, the steps did have a review and, and they said that did not have significant
Well, they, no, they said that it should not have been oriented that way, that it should have been great.
Right.
So. No votes tonight. Send this to the consultant and get their.
They'll, they'll also give the homeowner a history on, history on the clarity.
Yeah, I think what you're all going back to is out at Third Linden across the street. Did the same thing, come in there and it was quite a, quite a thing with the harbor really, really teed off. But it seems like harbor, what you're saying it can't be controlled, I, something's got to be done. They come in on a Saturday, they did the same thing. Now, they held that project for months and months, the harbor did. But I don't, I, I don't have an answer how you reflect that, but something's got to be done because we don't learn from our mistakes.
So we have the discussion we would like us to get sent to. And we will see when they come back for especially looking for, uh, their comments on the wall and the sheet at the top of the.
This is, this is, I'm looking at, just from looking at the picture, you know, I had Steve bringing up that last picture, there's two posts at the one corner of the place and I just looked at just one post or two. I don't know, I can't tell. Cause the two posts are very, there's a lot of the two posts that, that instead of one post, there's a lot of them around Columbia that have two posts. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you. All right, next, um, we have an answer to providing letter of support for the Lancaster Waterline Project. Based on the system there of do you want to fill us in on whatever you know?
So, so we're looking to break a forty-two inch diameter water line from Fifteenth Street all the way down Main Street. Coming across Fourth Street, down Mill Street, all the way to the river. So we had a few meetings with the city and what their proposals are. There's, there's different areas throughout the, uh, the township, the borough, the county that they could actually bring this water line through. This, in my opinion, is my opinion that this is the easiest way for them to do it. It also avoids some of the contamination down along the waste water treatment plant, which would be pretty expensive for them. So in my opinion, we take the brunt of this with literally no gain. So I cannot support this. However, I don't think this letter was, needs to be directed to me. It needs to be directed to council and what the actual borough and what their feelings are with this. There's quite a few things that were never answered, such as, uh, you dig up in front of the fire department. How are our fire trucks going now? And I know these might be some preliminary things, but before I could actually get behind some of these, a lot of these questions would need to be answered. Are you going to shut down Manor Street for weeks, months over the winter? A lot of these questions, we couldn't get answered. And again, I think they're trying to, you know, make sure you get the funding for something first and then we'll figure out how to do it. I'm just not, not at all in favor of, of this.
Didn't Mayor talk about this last week and didn't he say this is just a formality that we have to comply? Or am I thinking of something else?
Well, I mean, it, you know, personally, it's a, you know, it's the request, the whole letter for me saying whether or not I, I approve of this. Now, you know, it's a PUC, we may not have a lot of chances of stopping this, but that doesn't necessarily mean you have to support it to get the bond. They have to have letters of support.
Support from wherever it's running through.
Yeah.
Wherever the pipe's running through, they have to have letters of support from, you know, West Hemphill, whoever, Mountville, whoever it's going.
And if I can say the current pipeline does not run this route, so you could actually run this right at the same location.
I mean, this, now, in reading through the whole letter, I didn't really see, you know, what their, they didn't really present what their other options were. Yeah, it might be some more cost for them, but it might be going through some farmland that's going to do a lot less disturbance to, you know, cutting through a whole town. And, I mean, let's face it, you're, you know, Manor Street, a lot of traffic gets on Manor Street, not to mention that our, that's where our only fire station is stationed at. It certainly is going to disrupt their services no matter which way they go. It's, it's going to be, if we, you know, if we choose to support, I'm, I'm not, I don't, I don't begrudge them their, what they have to do to, to get a backup water supply. So I get that. And they want to use some of their existing facilities that are in place, but it just ripped through.
To, to what I was actually asking council to do here is tell me what their recommendations, how do they want me to respond to this?
Another concern I have, you know, when I was looking at the map and proposed location, we have an ordinance about street opening. And it's five years, correct?
Four, ten.
Seven or ten.
How long before they can open a street after we've done it? It's ten years. Okay. Now, the other thing we haven't been able to get an answer on is what the proposed remediation is going to be. There, from what I can tell from talking to different people, they're saying they're just going to pack to Uber what they do. But forty-two inches taken, we, we need curb to curb. But where I'm going is Mill Street is three years old. Because, and that was a CDVG project.
Yeah.
I don't want to see Mill Street tore up. That's not right for them to tear it up. And then not repaint it completely.
Or not get it right, which is more than likely.
Exactly. And not only that.
Water leaking a forty-two inch pipe.
Shawnee run there, they're going to have to go across that. Well, we just did a stream restoration project on that too.
Well, not to mention, we, all of our streets normally have, we already got gas, sewer, water lines in them. And you're talking, we're not talking the twenty-four inch pipe, forty-two inch pipe. This thing is gigantic. That, you know, it, how is that going to disrupt? How deep are you going to have to go?
For, for routes, we're not given that under. This is what they want to do.
Originally, when this project was proposed, and this was before I came on, Mark said they were going to put in next to their existing line, which is down Strickler Run.
Right.
That was their original plan is to add a second one next to it.
Right.
But the, the issues they ran into, where they were going to have to cross covenant land, which causes them legal hassle. So they, it's easier for them to just go on a public right-of-way legally. Doesn't necessarily cost less.
Yeah, no, I'm not in favor of it.
I'm not in favor of it either.
But I'm wondering, hey, we need a revenue. Can we charge a fee to use the raw underground to transfer, transfer water from the River Lancaster City?
I mean.
Not in a public of right, right-of-way.
I have, well, I have to look because we did do the ordinance specifically related to those small cell wireless facilities. And that didn't show. Now, I don't, I'd have to look and see whether that could be applicable to this possibly. Um, I don't know that it would be, but.
I mean, the street opening permits alone would be significant.
Talking about longer length.
Well, no, I know.
Year after year, after year, after year, after year.
Yeah, I don't know. We haven't seen any, we haven't seen anything from any other. Any other water lines coming.
Curb to curb.
Can we, can we respond with a letter of, of this is not what we want to do? And also, this is what it would cost and figure out street restoration? I don't know, maybe.
That seems like a lot of money for them for a letter. I would rather just reject it.
Uh-huh.
And it can come back to us with a demand.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I would too. Just reject it and then.
Let them.
Let them come back and say, then come and talk to our board.
And that, that puts us in negotiations.
But see, technically, they, they could, am I mistaken? They could move forward because this is a public right-of-way with or without our approval. They're just looking for our approval to help them. Do they need it?
Yes.
Yes.
Cause I wasn't sure from my conversation with Derek, it, I wasn't.
They, as far as I know, any bond like this, you need, you need approval from every municipality that it affects.
Right. So for the bond, however, they could, if they had funding, just come and do it because it's a public right-of-way.
I don't know about that.
Mm-hmm, yes.
No. I think they can, yes.
Cause they're a utility.
So, so there also was a lot of things that, that were kind of border line on this, you know, and the fact that we get the letter at the very last minute, but we need to give a response by July thirtieth. You know, there's a lot of things that were just kind of pushed and, um.
I had a conversation with the manager from another one of the municipalities that was asked for the same thing. And they had a lot of the same concerns that I did. And when they requested someone from the city come to answer questions, they did not get a favorable response. So I think the city pretty much just thinks, you know, do it.
If you can do it without the money, get the money, you're going to have a bond. To get the bond, they're going to have our approval.
Yep, exactly.
What did the other municipalities say? Did they approve? They sent a letter of approval?
The other municipality, they're, they have a policy that anytime someone requests a letter of support, it goes to their board. It doesn't, it's not made by the manager. It's made by the board and their board meets once a month and they have it met. So they're not going to be by the time this deadline was. Yes, Sharon?
I think Manager Coffold mentioned that, um, in front of the fire company could be dug up. Is that part, I couldn't quite make out that map, but.
So they're going all, all the way up Manor Street to Fifteenth Street.
Okay.
So they're going to catch everything in between there. So they're going to catch everything in between there. This pipe, the pipe diameter is forty-two inches, so you probably look in six to seven deep wide.
Well, and would that not then impact, maybe you're selling the Guinness at the same time this is happening? I didn't know the timeframe you're looking at for construction on this.
Well, it's going to be, it's going to be in two years.
Oh, okay, okay. I just didn't know how quickly they were moving things.
But it's a good point, access to the Guinness could be disrupted in a significant way.
As we go laying, they're going to go right up four sixty-two, they're going to deal there. And the EDC, this is crazy, maybe this is stupid. Why can't the EDC parcel off or piece of the McGinnis property along the edge or wherever to them sell, sell on the property, let them run the water on the property again?
Most of it isn't in the zoned area. It's, the, the current pipe that runs down through there is pretty much in the, uh.
In the conservation.
Conservation, yeah, in, in our conservation area.
Pretty much parallel with the front room.
Yeah.
But, and, and it doesn't.
It's the covenants that are almost there.
Back to covenant, they would have to disturb the active covenant.
Oh, you mean the, the, uh, conservatory stuff?
Yeah. Yeah, so. You know, and then, I mean, we're just a small piece of it. It goes through West Hemfield, Mountville and East Hemfield.
Right up four sixty-two, right in the Mountville.
Yeah, honestly, I think, I think we just send it firm now. And in the meantime, cause we know it's coming somewhere up through here. In the meantime, um, we figure out where or, or if it's going to Manor Street, what demands do we want on that? Because there is going to be, um, stuff that goes against our. It, it, it may even be housing the fire service for a month or a year or something.
You know, something like that could be a deal breaker for Guinness purchase. What, two years from now, they're going to be digging up the road and I need access to this twenty-four seven, right? I, I, I don't, I can't shut down my facility.
Yep.
Cause of this for, for six months while they do go up the road. That's going to be a deal breaker.
So, yeah, before we give approval, they need to come here and answer questions. And we need some sort of assurance on things. Anything else on this?
And I do, I, I would like to present that as a, you know, a bird of council.
Yeah.
Do we need a formal vote on this?
I'm making motion to reject the, uh, proposal.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by councilperson Puckman, second by councilperson Stahl to. Direct staff to. Send a letter of non-support for the Lancaster City Water Main Project. All in favor?
Aye.
Non, anyone opposed? Next, we are asked to consider a special event request. To use Rotary Park this Saturday morning as a staging area. For a march across the bridge. The executive brief says, um, approval contingent upon receipt of the application fee and late submission fee that has been paid. I'm not aware that we received these sort of get of insurance yet. No, we're on, yeah, I, we have not received that yet. Oh, okay.
Hi, council.
Hi.
You haven't met me before, so I'll just introduce myself, I'm Rachel Moore. I'm here with my friends Christina Salzfuß and Trex Prophet, we are from Indivisible MT. I'm a formerly practicing family physician from Mannheim Township area. And after I finished practicing family medicine, I started a business, uh, helping children with learning disabilities. Um, so thank you for having us here, um, I love Columbia, I love your river. Learned a lot about your town, sitting here at this meeting tonight. And, um, Indivisible MT is a nonpartisan nonprofit, uh, but we are very progressive and I'm sure that puts us in kind of the opposite universe from most of your politics. But I'm sure that's not going to stop you from being fair about our request. Our, um, our permit request is just about using the park as a staging area for our event. And, um. What, all we want to do is this, we want to set up a table under the trees. Uh, we want to have some coolers of water and drinks. Um, and about eight AM, we're expecting about maybe a hundred to two hundred people. Um, to come up and line up, uh, sign in at the table, receive instructions and then wait in the shade for about thirty minutes. Um, and then those people are going to exit the park in an orderly fashion and they're going to be lined up by vested safety marshals. Uh, for, for a march onto the Veterans Memorial Bridge. Um, that march is to honor the work of Congressman John Lewis, a civil rights icon. Um, and, and they will be, um, going out onto the bridge and then they will be turning around. And they will be coming back about nine twenty through ten in the morning and then they'll disperse to their cars. And that is what we need the permit for. As you've noted, we paid our fee, uh, we filed our permit. We're sorry about the late fee. Um, if, you know, we're trying to organize on a very tight timeline. Um, but despite the fact that we have a peaceful and well-planned nature, uh, the peaceful and well-planned nature of our event. We've had a very, very hard time getting anybody to insure this. Um, insurance companies just run away when you say, uh, that something is political in nature these days. Um, and, uh, even though our purpose is to celebrate solidarity with our partners in York and to express nonviolent resistance to injustice in the spirit of John Lewis. The insurance companies say, well, that's political and if that's political, so be it. Uh, but in light of that interpretation and our careful plans, that we're asking you to waive the insurance requirement if possible. We are still trying, uh, we're working with the League of Women Voters, uh, and they have some liability coverage. So right now, we're desperately trying to see if maybe they could offer us some liability coverage through their policy. Um, I've contacted nine different insurance companies and been told no, over and over again, I've worked with. You know, companies that specialize in political organizations, I have been on the phone with everybody I can think of. And we just can't get anybody to cover us. We would be happy to provide this.
Could I ask a question?
Department.
Are you asking for insurance for your entire event?
No, no, we just asked them, I made it very, very clear to these people.
You're asking for insurance to use a park to give water to your.
Yes.
Organized.
And they say, oh, are you a political organization and what am I supposed to do? I don't want to lie to them because then the insurance will be negated and that won't do anybody any good. And as soon as I say, well, yes, this is associated because there is, you know, a, a, a nationwide, I can't hide the fact that there is a nationwide push to honor John Lewis on the fifth anniversary of his death and it's occurring this week. As soon as they hear it's associated with that, they go, no, sorry, we don't do that. Um, the responses I've gotten is there, uh, we don't do political, there's no market for that. Uh, anything that involves rally, uh, we don't cover, there's a checkbox for if you're a political organization, check here, no, thank you. Due to the violative nature of political rallies, we do not have any insurance company willing to insure this. So, um, you can see we have a little bit of a problem. It's not that we're unwilling to meet your requirement, we're totally willing to do it. Um, some of my colleagues have questioned why Indivisible MT is even bothering to come to this council, uh, for this permit? Because they say, well, you know, protesting and peaceful assembly is a first minimum, right? And this is a public park, you should just go. Uh, and to that, I'll just say that in our young history as an organization, we have been committed to doing things peacefully, safely and in cooperation with local authorities, including the police. Um, I've called Pam Armold, I've called Suzanne Martin over in Wrightsville, I've been on the phone with Hope Byers. Um, and I've talked to Chief Jason J of the West Hemfield Police and he's told me he's talked to all the, all the other police chiefs. And I've explained to everybody that we're trying to do this the right way and so that's why I'm here talking to you tonight. So, um, we, uh, we had a rally recently in Lancaster, we had over four thousand three hundred people there. There was, we worked very closely with the Lancaster Police, there was not one incident of violence or property damage. And we want to keep things that way. I have a detailed safety plan, I have, uh, I can give each one of you a copy of it to show you, you know, what we've planned, we have plans for parking. You know, we live in this community too. Um, we care about balancing free speech rights with the needs of the community. And that's why we're speaking out too, because we think that, you know, some things are going wrong right now in our politics. We know that not everybody agrees with, uh, what we're saying and we can respect those differences, but we just hope that you can respect our right to speak as well. So thank you for considering our request.
Did not Lancaster City require any kind of insurance?
No, they did not. No, they did require permitting and we did get it, we got a noise variance because we had amplified sound. And we worked with the police very carefully and closely. And they watched over us because we actually had some threats against us in Lancaster City.
Have we ever used a liability waiver for any sort of event? Or in, in the.
Since I've been only having.
Since, since we enacted this work.
So a liability waiver is not compatible with our ordinance?
It requires, the, the ordinance requires insurance, you know, you, other than your zoning ordinance, you can waive any requirements of your ordinances, but that's, that's completely.
Where are you directing people to park?
We have permission from the Watch and Clock Museum and also from Holy Trinity to use their lots. Um, we also are telling them they can park on the street if they want. Uh, we've been asked to stay out of, uh, River Park because there is a memorial event happening there, starting at noon, which was part of the reason we made our event eight to ten, so we'd be well out of the area. Um, because we wanted to respect that. Um, so we're just telling people not to park there at all, just so that we won't be in the way.
Do you have a sign up?
Yes, we do.
So is that where you're coming up with your a hundred people or so?
Yeah, yeah, we have, we have numbers, people register for this and then they confirm their registration.
So Lancaster was four thousand?
And we had a pretty good idea, that's how many people were coming, we actually had over six thousand registrations for that.
Okay.
So we knew approximately, we know that a certain percentage of people won't actually show on the day, usually about twenty percent or so, give or take. So we had a pretty good idea how many people were showing up there and we have an idea how many people are showing up here. We knew this would be a lot less because people have to drive, uh, and it's in the morning on a Saturday.
And it's a different type of event too.
It's different and you have to be able to walk and a lot of our people are on the, I don't want to say older, on fifty-six. But, you know, um, a lot of our people are like, I have to walk, where, you know, they're not going to. It, it's one thing to stand in the street, you know, in a park and hold a sign, it's another thing to walk out on a bridge. So they're not going to do that.
And if it's windy, it really gets you out there.
Yeah, yeah, well, I've been out there, we've been out there, we're going to have a, we're going to have a little planning rehearsal on Friday night and like, we have it all.